2025 work session for the Rutherford County School System. First up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence and Prayer. We will be opening the meeting with a brief moment of silence or prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. No one is required to participate or be present for any of these, and being in this portion of the meeting is completely voluntary. Ms. Rosales, you have a special guest this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have the honor and pleasure of having one of our students that recently graduated from Rutherford County Virtual School. His name is Hudson McNeil, and he's going to be leading us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear Lord, we just come together one more time, and Lord, we're coming and asking that you would give us wisdom and discernment. Guide us, Lord, in our decisions that we're about to make. I pray, God, that you protect those that are needing protection, and I pray that you will provide for those that are needing and that need provide. Thank you so much for all that you do for us, the good and the bad, and we praise you for everything, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
First off, we have the agenda. I hope everybody's got a chance to look it over. And then we have the consent agenda. Full disclosure, one of the new spediers at Laverne High School is my son, Michael. So, just letting you all know. That name looks familiar, it's because it's my son.
And we very well could add people again today and tomorrow, trying to get people hired for nepotism as the school year starts.
Is this where we have the... where we show if we're using the facility use?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so I wanted to disclose that Breakthrough Tennessee is on the agenda, and that is a nonprofit that my family owns, and we're on the agenda for utilizing the facility in Blackman High School.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Next. On Thursday.
I'm sorry. We haven't been there in a while lately.
There are a lot. There's pages and pages of... If not, we'll move on to transportation.
That's under consent agenda as well.
Okay, well, good enough then. Okay, we have no guest speakers tonight, but we do have Dr. Jeff McCann.
I'm here tonight to present a summary of the two charter application recommendations that I emailed you, I think, last Friday and over the weekend. Hopefully, I can keep this as brief as possible. A lot of this information you already know, because we've already been over it in the initial round of applications. But we're here tonight to take a look at the amended applications submitted by both Nova Smart Academy and Rocketship Tennessee IV. Just a reminder where we are on the timeline. We're at that second-to-last block where you have to vote on the amended applications within 60 days of receipt. And this is the final board meeting before that 60-day window is up, which is why we need to vote this week. And just a review of the process itself. On April 24th, you, as a board, voted to deny both of their initial applications, and both submitted amended applications within the submission window by June 2nd. And the Charter Review Committee engaged about six weeks of review and scoring of the amended applications per TDOE guidelines, just like we did the initial applications, same process we followed. And I'm here tonight to present the recommendation report to you and the public in general. And you'll need to vote on it, on the decision whether to approve or deny each of the two applications at Thursday evening's board meeting. Just a reminder, if you decide to deny, they do have 10 days in which they can appeal to the Public Charter School Commission for approval there. Or if you approve of them, you can engage with the charter schools to develop that legal official agreement to operate on a 10-year term. Just a reminder, here's the members of the review team. You've seen this before. I just want to show it again, so you know that there's lots of expertise on the team from central office staff in just about every area that we could find. Two principals, our instructional specialists, two parents were on the board, and Ms. Rosales from the board was also represented on the committee. The two schools, if you'll remember, are Nova Smart Academy petitioning to open a K-8 school in Rutherford, and Rocketship Public Schools TN petitioning to open a K-5 school. Let's talk about Nova Smart Academy first. They're the same group that applied last year and were denied by both us and the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, but they're back again this year with a revamped application. Again, their intended location is Smyrna-Laverne, but they did indicate in the amended application that they would be willing to consider other locations or engage in discussions about other locations within Rutherford County if we felt like saturation or oversaturation was an issue in the Smyrna-Laverne area. They are willing to take a look, okay? They have no other schools in operation. If this is approved, it will be their only school. This is their true New Start Charter School. This is what their proposed enrollment looks like, starting with 192 kindergarten first graders, adding 96 students in successive classes each year until year eight, when they reach their full enrollment of 864. And I would not be surprised if it got to that point, if they considered opening or applying to open a high school after that. Dr. Sager has mentioned that as a possibility, so just something to think about. So here's a summary of that evaluation of the amended application, and I'm only going to try to hit the highlights, some things that were changed, for the most part, but things that we still feel are strengths and areas to grow. To sum it up, the review committee recommends denial of this application as well, because they failed to meet or exceed the criteria of the rubric in all three areas: academic plan, operations, and the financial plan. And remember, they have to be deemed to have met or exceeded the standards in all three areas before we, as a committee, could recommend that they be approved. And we did not deem that they'd met or exceeded the standards in any of the three. And let's talk about why, okay? First of all, Section 1, that academic plan and design, our concerns: remain special populations. Particularly with ELLs, there still remains incorrect and inaccurate terminology. They use terms like "push-in," "modifications," which are not allowed anymore for ELL students. They are not up to date on the current regulations for ELL. They had the same issue last year. It's better this year, but still, there are some concerns. And monitoring concerns as well. Some of the things that they list for how they're going to monitor their ELLs are not up to current expectations for ELL students, per state of Tennessee regulations. And our students with disabilities, Dr. Rawson reviewed their plan thoroughly, and she felt like they just demonstrate a lack of understanding for how Rutherford County provides services to students with disabilities, mainly at the building level. And we do, in our schools, we provide most all services our special education students need at that building level. In this application, and even some of the other application, to kind of point towards other locations for students that need other services. And we don't necessarily provide that in Rutherford County School. That's something typical you would in a district like Metro, that has a whole lot more schools and placements for kids like that, but we tend to serve kids at the building level. And their plan doesn't really reflect that they fully understand that, I don't think. Also, another concern, and this is a big one for us, and I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Go back to that previous slide. I want you to help me with something. Push-in, modifications, monitoring concerns. Expand upon that. I'm a little naive to that terminology.
Those are terminologies that used to be used, where they would push teachers into the classroom to work with kids that needed direct ESL services, which is you're no longer allowed to do. Modifications, you can't modify the curriculum for an ELL student or a student with disabilities. You can... What's the word I'm looking for? You can adapt their services, but you cannot modify the curriculum. They have to receive the same curriculum as everybody else.
It appears that... forgive me if I'm putting words in the committee's mouth, because I don't mean to, but trying to understand this. There is... are they assuming they will not have these type of students?
No, they're not.
Are they not taking it serious enough? Have they not done enough homework with the population and the demographics in our county? I mean...
That's a great point, Mr. Rawson. That was something actually the State Public Charter School Commission brought up with their plan last year when they appealed to them, is the fact that it didn't appear like they'd done enough recruitment and outreach to the ELL community in the area to ensure that they would have sufficient numbers in their school. And we still kind of see that as an issue, and we'll get to the recruitment part here in a minute and the community outreach, but that does appear to be a concern.
I'm just trying to understand the lacking.
Okay, so, and back to the community support and demand. As you know this, we surveyed Rutherford County parents at the beginning of this process, and 82% said that they were not in favor of approving the Nova Smart Academy application. And Nova responded with their amended application indicating that they felt like, well, that survey was really more about charters in general and not about Nova specifically. But that's not exactly correct. There was a question about charters in general, in which 80% of parents were not in favor of charters in general as an option. But there were specific questions about Nova Smart Academy, this one in particular, and it had links to their actual application, where the parents could go to that application and read through it and see what they had to offer. So there was some specificity, specification for Nova Smart Academy, too, okay? Now, there were a lot of strengths, too, and some improvements they made to the Nova amended application are: they totally removed the references to culturally relevant curriculum. And if you remember, that was a cause of concern in the initial application, that they claimed that their curriculum was culturally relevant. Well, they've taken that out, and they have now ensured that their curriculum is in full alignment with Tennessee content standards. Increased time allotted to science and social studies. We pointed that out in the initial application, that we didn't feel like they were allotting enough time to those two subjects, and they fixed that. And their schedule indicates 30 to 40 minutes per day for each subject, which is, for an elementary school, that's pretty strong for science and social studies on a daily basis. The exception there is on Wednesdays, if you remember, we looked at their calendar, that they have early release Wednesdays for teacher planning. They release an hour early on Wednesdays, and that's the only day that they will not meet that full 30, 40 minutes a day of science and social studies. And a concern for us was their role of school counselor. They had indicated that their school counselor would serve as the coordinator of their multiple-tiered system of supports, MTSS, which you might know better as RTI, Academic Interventions, and that is typically not a role enjoyed by or filled by school counselors in Rutherford County. They clarified that to say, no, what we mean is that school counselor is going to co-organize the RTI behavior plans along with a fellow administrator in the school, which is more in line with the role the school counselors have in Rutherford County. I do have to really commend them, though, for including a school counselor in their budget. They're the only charter school that has applied or is operating in Rutherford County that employs the use of a school counselor, which we think is a critical role in our schools now. All right, let's go on to Section 2, the Operations Plan and Capacity. Again, our concern is, and we love Dr. Sager, we think he's a very capable person, he's a great, great guy, but that's a lot for one man to do, to open a school. That's a lot of hats he's got to wear, a lot of things to get done as one person in the beginning. He has added some more assistant principals, but they don't come on board until the years progress. And the fact that this is simply their first attempt, even as a governing board, of opening a charter school. So there really is no track record for us to go on, okay? So that was a concern of the committee, even though we really like Dr. Sager, that is a concern, that this is their first rodeo, all right? The facilities improvement budget, we're questioning whether that's sufficient or not. They did increase it to $850,000, over the original $500,000 they had in the initial application, but we're concerned it's sufficient for two reasons. Number one, the facility they're looking at is an older facility. It's going to need significant upgrades in terms of safety, security, ADA compliance, things like that. And it turns out that they are not going to receive one of the grants that they had budgeted as a significant revenue source for them. And I'll get to that in the financial plan part here in just a second. The storm shelter variance, again, they still intend to request a three-year variance on building a storm shelter, which is a concern of the committee, but I will say this, that the state has changed their policy on that to where they no longer require, from their point of view, but it is now a local decision as to whether or not we want to require a storm shelter be constructed. And the facility that they have chosen, it might be one that we would want them to. I can't say that for sure, Mr. Lee, but it is an older facility. So that's just something to think about, is that possibly that would have to be done, too. And waiting three years to get it done is a safety concern, okay? Strengths and improvements in that Section 2. Again, they really have done a great job of revamping their board over last year's board, a lot more varied expertise and plans for ongoing recruitment. They've added three additional members since the initial application was submitted, and all three of those members have experience operating a charter school, or operating in a charter school. That was a concern of ours, is they did not have enough charter experience. Well, they added three more board members that do. Transportation, they've improved that plan a little bit with forecasted ridership. They've now revised their forecasted ridership to match the local ridership of Smyrna-Laverne area, so they're in line with what typically those kids would do. In terms of around 70% ridership, they revised their plan and their budget. They've also engaged with a transportation firm, Wise Coaches of Nashville, and Wise Coaches helped them decide how many buses, what size buses, how many routes they were going to need to run, and what it was going to cost. So their budget for that is a lot more, we think, accurate than what it was. It's always been a hallmark of our, in our mind, that they want their staff demographics to align with their student population, and the fact that they do have a facility already located. They have a pretty strong partnership with that church in Laverne on Ridley Street, okay? So let's talk about finances for them. Number one, as I mentioned a minute ago, they were not awarded the New School Venture Fund grant, which is included in their budgeted revenue in year zero of $250,000. They are not going to get that grant. So that could result in a negative ending balance in year zero of minus $45,761.81. Now, Dr. Sager did tell me that, you know, they're committed to doing whatever fundraising they need to do and turn over every stone, but that's a lot of money that they're not going to get that they were counting on. And as a result, well, not even as a result of that, but their budget margins in general are overly thin. If you look at their budget by the end of year five, the cash that they have on hand, the ending fund balance they have at the end of year five, really only equates to about four days of business expenses. And I determined that by taking their total year's expenses and divided it by 200 days, which is the typical school contracted days of 200, to get that figure. And you notice, that does not even include any summer school programming, so that would have to come out of that four days of expenses left. And it also did not take into account that they were not going to receive the New Schools Venture Fund. So that ending balance after year five could be even lower, okay? Especially if they don't meet budgeted enrollment numbers. You can kind of see there what the funding impact is for them in year one, or for Rutherford County, year one of operation and year five, okay? Now, that's... before we go on to Rocketship, do you have any questions specific to Nova? I will sum it all up again at the end, but do you have any questions about Nova Smart Academy?
I've got one question, but if we give enough money for these X amount of students, and half of the students don't show up, when do we get that money back, or do we?
Here's how it worked last year. In your initial year of operation, you're funded based on your predicted enrollment, okay? Let's say you predict you're going to have 400 kids in your school. Well, the first three months, we have to fund you at 400 kids. And then that October true-up comes around, and let's say you really only had 250 students. Well, the money that we were giving you for those extra 150 kids that didn't show up does have to come back to us. And this is what happened last year. As a result, our two charter schools did not get a payment at all, I think in November, and one of them did not get much of one also in December to make up that difference. And that was tough on them. It was, because what they did was, they went out and spent that money that they got on the front end, because, you know, when you're opening a new school, there's a lot of expenses involved there. So they spent a lot of that money upfront, and when it came to those two months where they didn't get funding, it hurt them.
Yeah, I just think it's a real problem, you know? If it's got that much of a thin line anyway.
Right.
They're paid once a month.
They're paid 10 times a year.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Sol.
And, Mr. Rawson, you'll definitely get this. Our problem came into, you have to budget upfront for the full amount, and have the commission approve the full amount. Does come back, but you have to budget upfront.
Right. You may catch it back November, December, January, but you...
The commission has to approve all of it, and they're not going to come back and give you extra money.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Wish they would.
Yeah.
Now, I will say this, the opposite will come into play for our... I know this is really off-topic for our two charter schools that are in operation this year. In your second year, you're funded based on your enrollment from last year, your previous enrollment, plus whatever additional grade levels you're adding.
And I don't know, while I've got the floor, if you don't mind indulging me a little bit, the more I try to educate myself on charter schools, can they charge a tuition?
They cannot.
They cannot charge tuition, but they can do fundraising. They could do a school sponsorship. You know, if they hit up, well, I was going to say Bridgestone, but probably Bridgestone's not the company to hit them up right now, since they're on the way.
That would be a good one to hit up, right?
That was ugly. I'm sorry.
McDonald's.
Yeah, somebody, but a business or a church? Could a church fund them, help fund them? That's legal.
They could do as much fundraising as they want, just like any school.
So they can get sponsorship.
As their board approved it, as long as their board approved it.
They just cannot charge tuition. That would be considered a private school at that point.
That would be correct. And they are a public school. Charters are publicly funded schools, okay? Any other questions about Nova? All right, let's take a look at Rocketship. I did, a couple of things I failed to mention about Nova before we go on. They did improve their teacher salaries. They initially had told us they were going to have to hire, look for zero experienced teachers, because that's all they could afford, was to pay teachers on that entry level. Well, they ramped their budget up to cover for experience and to pay for performance incentives that they were in the plan but weren't originally in the budget. And they also revised their enrollment deficit contingencies to match the contingencies that our two operating charters experienced with enrollment deficits this year, if you remember that, that they had said, well, we can operate with up to 25% less enrollment than what we're asking for. But we told them, well, our current charters experience deficits of up to 35%. So they came back and revised their budget to match that. They did. So Rocketship, again, the school itself doesn't really have a name yet. They named it by committee after they've been approved, but they do have a charter management organization, Rocketship Education Tennessee. This would be the only charter school that we have in our district, if approved, that has a charter management organization, an overarching group that governs them, okay? Again, their proposed location is Smyrna-Laverne, and they do have three schools in operation right now in Metro Nashville. They also applied to open a fourth one in Metro this year along with us, and it's my understanding they were denied initially as well and are in the amended application process, just like we are here. Here's what their proposed enrollment looks like. Again, they're only serving grades K through 5. 240 in year one, reaching 575 in full capacity by year six. That's their target. And a summary, here's a summary of the evaluation of their plan, is that, again, the review committee is recommending denial of their application. That should say amended application for Rocketship TN, because the application failed to meet or exceed the criteria of the rubric in three of the four areas. They actually had a fourth area. Since they have schools in existing operation and a charter management organization, they had a fourth section of their application that had to be submitted. But the committee says that they partially met the standard for academic plan, financial plan, and the portfolio and performance record. We did determine that they met or exceeded the standard in operations plan and capacity, but that's the only area that we marked as meets or exceeds. And you have to be scored as meets or exceeds in all four for us to recommend them for approval, okay? Academic plan, Section 1, let's talk about our concerns. First of all, the four content blocks scheduled, which is, you know, that's a big part of their daily schedule. But again, we feel like time for science and social studies is lacking in those four contents they showed. And when we told them that, they made no increases in the science and social studies time. I think it's only nine to 18 minutes daily for both, is what is indicated in their plan. And they still have not adopted any curriculum for social studies. Their plan is to embed that in the ELA curriculum, which is fine, but there's no guarantee that Tennessee content standards are going to be covered for social studies in that ELA curriculum. And remember, after they leave fifth grade, they're coming back to us, where they will be held accountable for social study scores. So that's a concern of ours, is that social studies are not going to be adequately addressed. Same thing for science. Again, we have concerns over the ELL services. There's also contained errors like inaccurate service levels per their ALPA-21 results. Again, they're using the term modifications, which is not allowed for ELL students. You cannot modify their curriculum. And they failed to correct their screening deadlines that we pointed out in the initial application. They still claim that they have 30 days to screen a student that comes to them for ELL services, but that is not correct. That's only at the beginning of the year. After the year starts, they only have 10 days to do it, and they did not edit that. They did not revise that at all. A concern we had with the initial application was their focus on social emotional learning. However, they did go in and change that. They changed that terminology completely. It no longer says social emotional learning anywhere in the plan. Instead, it says life skills development. However, it's basically, there were no changes in the plan focus, they just changed the name. They just changed the title of it. And that learning, and I can tell exactly how they describe it, is it's Tier 1 Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. It aims to integrate storytelling with pro-social skill building to help students understand their lives and share their personal stories. That's what that's all about, developing life skills. And the only reason we mention that, not that that's necessarily a bad thing, according to the committee, but we know that it's been a challenging point for this board in focusing on social emotional learning at the school level. We haven't always been in opponent of that, okay? That's why we put it in there, so you guys would know. And also their success rates, their performance rates. While they have shown some good growth scores at some of their schools, their success rates do not match RCS data. And I'll give you an example. Rocketship schools' ELA data from two years ago, they were 21 to 26% proficient, okay? Or meets or exceeds, 21 to 26% across all their schools. RCS ELA was 38% in the Smyrna-Laverne area, in the area of intended services. So a good 12% to even to 17% below performance for RCS. So that is a concern, that even though they've been able to show growth, they have not been able to show the success rates that match RCS data. And we're very proud of our results here in Rutherford County, okay? And again, that lack of community support and demand, 80% of the respondents were not in favor of approving Rocketship TN's application. And they don't solicit pre-enrollment commitments at all. They do provide some letters of support, and there were several letters of support in their amended application, but they're all just generic form letters that they printed off, and they just had, apparently just had to write their name on it. So to me, that just lacks, it's a little impersonal, and it lacks true commitment, okay? Now, what did they improve? What are their strengths in that academic plan? Well, we've always liked their whole-child approach in incorporating STEM and positive behavior supports and multi-tiered system of supports. It includes enrichment. They do plan to provide a lot of enrichment, and parent engagement is a big part of their plan. And they did update their science curriculum to STEM Scopes, which is approved by the state of Tennessee. The initial application... The initial application was, did not utilize science curriculum that was approved by Tennessee. Okay? Again, they have strong instructional strategies for building fluent and accurate readers. That's their whole focus. And they're, they do have a solid plan to track data and recruit and, and market their school, although we haven't seen much of that yet. Okay? So what are our concerns for section two, the operations plan? Safety and security of the attended facility as related to the budget. And, well, you'll see this in a minute, but they have located a facility off Three Street in Smyrna, which is right by the, the airport. And it used to be a dentist office. We actually went and toured that when, I believe it was Springs Empire was looking for sites. So we knew that, that facility was available. It's going to need a lot of upgrades and the budget does not reflect that. Also, the budget doesn't reflect some necessary equipment, paying for a school nurse, even though the plan says they're going to have a school nurse, that's not in the budget. Same thing for an SRO. It's not in the budget. They're going to have an SRO, they said, but it's not in the budget. Recent denials of those new, of a new start and agreement renewal with MNPS are concerns of us too. You know, anytime you get denied and, and especially that renewal agreement. After a ten-year term, a local authorizer decided not to renew their agreement, that's a concern that we would have. Okay? But there are a lot of strengths in their operations plan. Remember, we rated this area as meets or exceeds the standards. They got a great history, strong staffing plans, their transportation provision is good. They've done it before. They know how to provide transportation. They procured facilities. They did revise their qualifications for the principal. If you remember in the initial application, the qualifications for who gets chosen to be the principal were minimal at best. Well, they revised those to match typically what we would require of a principal to be hired in Rutherford County now. Also, you'll notice they totally took out all the Common Core references, which never should have been in there in the first place, but they have removed all Common Core references because we don't do Common Core in Tennessee. We do Tennessee content standards. Okay? Section three, finances. Okay? Here's a concern that we have, their budgeted staff numbers. They talked in their, in their capacity interview and in their prescribed plan that they were going to have pupil teacher ratios of no more than twenty-five to one, but we pointed out to them in their initial application, no, you've got thirty and thirty-one to one because you did not, your full-time equivalent ratios in your budget do not match your student numbers. Their response was to come back and not change that, but say, well, we requested waivers of class size ratios in our previous schools and we plan to do the same thing here. So they're going to ask for a waiver from those state mandated class sizes and have larger than normal pupil teacher ratios in their school. Okay? Again, no school counselor in the budget. They do mention mental health workers, not sure what those are, possibly being used, but I, we think the school counselor role is, is vital, is a vital role at that elementary level, especially in that area. Okay? And do you see their year one and year five funding impacts? Out there in front of you? But some strengths of their financial plan is they have strong network support. They're not going to have to go into any debt. They're not going to have to take out any loans. They have the funds. Matter of fact, their network, I think, has a cash on hand of seven million dollars. At least that's what they say, that can be used. They've got a lot of great experience operating new charter schools and opening new charter schools, so this is not their first rodeo. And they have a history of sound financial performance. No noted negative or questionable financial practice, but you will notice, or you may not have caught this, but in the initial application, they said that they had zero audit findings ever. Well, they've taken that out since the, with the amended application, they've taken that out. But still, there, I can't, we can't find anything negative or questionable about any of their financial practices, so they do have a, a strong support system there. They did clarify some budgeted revenue issues for weighted funds, and they are in line with what they should be. And their operating fund balance by the end of year five is a full month, thirty days of operating funds by the end of year five. So that's a little bit stronger financial position. Okay? And then their final section, portfolio review and performance record, this reviews basically their past success. Okay? And if, if you read the submitted authorizer reports from the school, there are some concerns from several of their current schools. Their success rates academically fluctuate greatly, ELA math and science, and again, they don't really match RCS success rates. Chronic absenteeism is a concern in many of their schools, credentialing. What that tells me is that they are hiring teachers that are either not licensed or not endorsed in the subjects that they are teaching. And we run into that problem with our two current charter schools, and that is, that's a, that is a concern. That's a red flag. They have fairly high student suspension rates and, and those other obligations, there were a couple of those that were marked as, as that they failed to meet or were below. But all in all, I have to say that the authorizer reports were generally positive in nature. They were. And in my discussions with the other authorizers, they were positive about Rocketship schools. We would like to see them show a little more ownership of those two denials in, in our neighboring district, instead of saying, well, they really, they brought up some things in the, in the amended review process that weren't brought up in the initial process and we didn't know and, you know, we, we would like to see a little bit of ownership there of, hey, you know, we had some struggles here and here's what we learned.
The suspension rate, was that, what rate was that? Was that K to twelve?
This was, this was all of their schools, so mainly they're operating K-five schools right now, at least the ones in this state.
So they're not really?
Not in this state. Now, they have a lot of, they have schools all across the country, but not in Tennessee. Again, though, the strengths of their portfolio review is, like I said, their overall authorizer reports indicated positive ratings, supported by due diligence. I talked to folks at the State Charter Commission and folks at MNPS that are currently authorizing Rocketship schools, and they had positive things to say about them. Said they really are some of their veteran charter schools. And they had positive growth rates for a lot of their schools. Rocketship United has earned reward status from TDOE several times in their short history. And they received a gap muster label from Stanford University in their study that they did on charter schools back in twenty-three. And that label was given to any school who showed success in closing achievement gaps. Okay? So any questions about Rocketship before I sum it up?
They don't have a principal, right?
They do not. Their principal will not be hired until January, I believe. Okay? Well, let me wrap it up for you. Again, our recommendation summary is for NOVUS Smart Academy is we recommend that you deny their approval based on these concerns, those special populations concerns, lack of community support, lack of a track record, and funding in operations margins, very thin operations margins. Rocketship Tennessee, also we're recommending to deny based on a lack of attention to science and social studies, lack of community support, deficiencies in that ELL plan, recent denials by another local authorizer, their high pupil teacher ratios, and so far their success rate performance not being on par with Rutherford County schools. Those are, these are the reasons why we are recommending to you that they not be approved. And we know that's a difficult decision for you regardless, but that's what our recommendation is for both schools. So what are your next steps? You've got to think carefully about the applications submitted and the reports provided to you. You need to vote by resolution at Thursday's meeting. And we have to provide a copy of that resolution to the charter schools. And if they're denied, we have to give them specific reasons why. Okay? And if approved, we can begin the agreement negotiation process to develop a charter agreement that will last for ten years. Okay? Just reminders, a couple of reminders. The committee was very scrupulous with these applications. They picked over them with a fine-tooth comb. They really did, because we only want applications from solid, strong schools with no major concerns. Again, if we deny them, we have to indicate specific reasons, and they would have ten days to appeal to the Public Charter School Commission. Who could approve them and serve as their authorizer? Or they could approve them and allow us to negotiate with them to be their authorizer, or they could deny them as well. Okay? But remember, if we approve them here, we are liable for anything that's in that agreement, that's in that written application, and in the practice of that charter school. Just a final reminder, it's important that a quality authorizer makes decisions to approve or deny based on what's best for students, families, and the local education association, us, in other words, regardless of political pressures.
So if I understand that right, we're approving, it's on us. If the state approves it, it's on them, correct?
It is.
Any questions?
Questions for me? All right? Well, I, I'm happy to sit down with any of you between now and Thursday night. If you, if you've got questions and you just want to talk through it, give me a call, come see me in the office, I'm, I'm glad to do it.
Thank you for all your months of hard work.
Y'all did a real good job in doing this. Very thorough.
Thank you.
And we have no public comments for tonight, so number seven, federal funding updates.
So a couple of dates are about federal funding, and then Dr. Goyen will be here Thursday as well to answer questions if you have any questions. So you've got two requests, but I'm going to just give a quick update first. So as most people are aware, the federal funds from the U.S. Department of Education are frozen currently, at least most of those funds are. The ones that are most impacted for us are Title II, Title III, and then Title IV. So our three most impacted are Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Title II really deals with teacher development, professional development. What is frozen right now is one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and forty-two cents. Title III deals with largely English as a second language. That's seven hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then Title IV is safe and healthy. Last year, the board actually approved us to, it was the first time to allow moving Title IV funds to other areas. So we moved some to Title II and most of it to Title I, but that does come up to three hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. So those three funds are currently frozen. Just in talking with multiple directors and conversations with the Department of Education with those directors, I don't think we feel very confident that those funds will come back. And so we are planning our operations as if those funds didn't exist. Title I and some of the other ones, we, at least right now, feel pretty confident those are going to come, come back and actually be released in the next, have they been released already, Title I? It may have been released today because I know the, the updates have been going through. And Title I's the one that impacts our schools the most, and so we're, that's the one we need to get going.
Yes, Ms. Darby.
What did you say Title IV was?
Three hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
And that's typically like what-
It's safe and healthy is what they cover it. So we didn't, last year, you were allowed to move that money into other ones, and so we moved most of it into Title I to give more to the schools.
Okay. Thank you.
And so that's the only part of Title I that would be impacted. That three hundred ninety-three thousand would be reduced for that number. Luckily, we do not fund a whole lot of positions out of that. If you just do Google and look at what is happening in other districts, there are dozens upon dozens of positions that are being lost in some districts. We, that's not how we operate. The other part, which is more Tennessee Department of Education, even though I have it under federal, let's talk about ATLAS for a second. So ATLAS is under the federal program McKinney-Vento. That's what we use to support our homeless students. That has been a, a grant that you apply for from the State Department. This year, unbeknownst to just about everyone, that became a competitive grant. And so I don't know why homelessness is a competitive grant, but it has become a competitive grant. We and just about every district across the state that was impacted asked TDOE, where did you communicate this? And their response in writing was we had office hours to where it was communicated. And so we did not, we will not receive homeless funding for the next three years. So this year, next year, and the next one. Our McKinney-Vento funding is two hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars, and I can't read my writing. I think it's ninety-six cents. It's a something six. And so that is, I know that there are directors talking to legislators about the lack of communication, about how that was a grant. We just weren't selected as part of the competitive grant process this year. A lot of your big districts weren't. And so that is the first one. The first request you have is to move ATLAS liaison from federal funding to general purpose school funds. No additional funds or position will be needed due to an open position currently at the central office where this position will transfer. We had a school support specialist retire, and so this would move Jessica Johnson into that position without additional funding. And then I put on here, this request is due to RCS not receiving funds from McKinney-Vento for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's kind of what we know now. I know that directors are pushing on the state.
Do you think that we could bridge the gap a little bit with some help from like our churches, community, faith-based community?
Possibly. Yeah, possibly, because the biggest things that are still impacted right now are transportation for homeless students, because that's something that is provided there. If a student is homeless, they can stay at their current school and not have to be bused somewhere else. And then, of course, food, we're going to try to offset with school nutrition.
Ms. Maxwell?
Let Ms. Sharpe in. Okay. Yes, Ms. Sharpe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can speak on behalf of Jessica Johnson, I can't remember when she came. She worked somewhere else in our district, right? And then she moved to ATLAS. I have called her many times during the summer, many times at night. She, her husband works for Smyrna Fire Department. They, she has called in when there's tragedies in the family as well. So it's not just, it's not just homeless. She does, y'all would never know because it's all done behind the scenes, all the stuff that she does. And this is, this is a very important role for someone in our school system. So I know that there's been some other representatives on the federal level that have gone to the administration to ask for funding, and I think maybe we need to go back and, and do that. Because there, remember, I sent you that article, and they had gone back and, and they did go and release some more funding. So I think it's something that we need to reach out to our federal delegates and say, you know, this is very important for our district of sixty-two thousand-plus people because we, we don't want to lose Jessica, and she's, she's vital to our students. She's vital to our students.
I agree.
And she, she does things after hours that y'all have no, y'all have no idea.
Yes, Ms. Rosales.
So the grant is because the state, what was the reason why? I couldn't hear you.
The state changed it to a competitive grant this year. So normally, it's, it's been a grant and you apply for it, but districts have received it. This year, it became a competitive grant based on a score.
And what was, you said there was a reason that they said?
When we, when directors asked, and even Dr. Goyen, federal programs asked, where was this communicated? Because we get a commissioners update for directors every Thursday now. I think it's bi-weekly, but it's every Thursday. It's nowhere in there. Instead, it was mentioned that we have office hours as a department that you could call in for support if you needed help with that grant. We've, we've received this grant for years, so we didn't call in for support. I mean, we would have known to, we definitely would have.
Sure. How many counties received it then?
I don't know. They haven't released nothing.
Oh, you haven't released any debt at all?
I know there's enough of the, when we have a director's call in our Mid-Cumberland region, there were quite a few of us that did not.
Oh, wow. And then I'm glad that you clarified publicly that there's, even though we're having some funds frozen from the federal side, that this is not going to be impacting positions because I did receive phone calls about the, the funds, particularly for Title III. And I don't, someone sent me an article because it was stated in an article that Rutherford County personnel say that positions were going, that were impacted. And so that created a little bit of a firestorm and I got-
They are impacted, and that's what the next one is, is to request to move them for federal.
Right. They're impacted, but we're not laying off anyone. And I think people were nervous that we were going to lay off people. And so I think, I'm glad that you are stating it publicly that we're not going to be doing that.
At least that's my request to the board, is not to.
And I'm with you on that. So that's good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
And then the second one is the request to move six Title III positions to general purpose school funds from one forty-two due to the freeze of Title III funds. Currently impacting districts across the nation, these positions are vital to our operations and academic success. Additional funding is not needed as funds realized from three open ESL teaching positions. They're no longer utilized, as well as we have an additional central office specialist position that we do not plan to hire right now that'll give us those funds. I don't know what's happening to my voice all of a sudden. But board's aware of what that position was, it was in our email last week. So these positions are still, are no longer needed, the ESL teaching positions, due to academic success experienced by our students and teachers, requiring less ESL staff of what we know right now. So what that means is every year you exit students from ESL services, and when you exit students from ESL services, then you lower your ratio of students that you need, so.
Kudos to Ms. Turnbow.
Yeah, thank you.
She's done an excellent job.
And the request, just so everyone knows, three of them are ESL coaches that support all of our schools with ESL instruction. And the other three are family liaisons who help our, not necessarily with translation, but they do help with translation, but really helping parents navigate the school system. And those are the other three. And I'm.
Yes, go ahead.
So ESL, then, is it kind of like a bell curve? In, in other words, they come into the program, then they kind of exit the program?
Yes.
And so depending on the population and how long a student has been with us, that's the reason you would not necessarily need those positions or be able to reclassify those positions? That's what it looks like you're doing.
Usually, within your first four or five years is when you can exit the most students because they, the language acquisition is so quick. Once they're, once you get past five years, then they're considered a long-term ELL, and it's a lot harder to progress that student. I was pulling up, do you have the number right on? I was pulling up our PowerPoint.
And the question, yeah, the question I was going to follow that up with is how does that student population, has there been a downward trend?
No.
In the last two, three years?
No, it has been way, way, way up.
Well, and that's, that's the only reason I've got a little concerned about doing this.
We expect it to drop a little.
I understand you shuffling money, and I appreciate that, I just don't want to cut our nose off by your face.
And to give you how well Ms. Turnbow and our ESL team is doing. So the, here are exit numbers of how many students were exiting for English as a second language. 2021, we exited 349 students, 2022, 459, 2023, 495, 2024, 648. And here's why I'm very, I'm confident in our number. This year, we exited 1,130. And so almost 500 more students, which 14, 15 teaching positions by the time that those students trickle out of your school system.
How do you know how many is coming in?
We don't, but we're going based on previous numbers.
When will you have an idea?
September, that's usually when it settles down.
You'll have it, I was going to say, would you know by November or December?
Yes, yeah, we'll know by mid-September. That's usually when our growth starts to level.
So if we got to look elsewhere to replace?
Yep.
That's my only concern here, if that makes any sense, that is.
And Kelly, now we, Kelly, our, kind of, we've talked about our.
If we got to dig a little deeper somewhere.
Our separation of powers is that I sign them and Dr. Anthony can, or Kelly approves them, Dr. Anthony posts them. So this is kind of the three of us working together to see where our positions are. And go for it, Kelly.
Just really quick, oh, this doesn't, okay. First time with the new mic. We also did some reallocation of positions to meet the, kind of, that 1 to 35 ratio across the schools over the summer. So as positions would open up, we're, we'd more efficiently place the teachers. So I, we are not concerned about these necessarily impacting our schools right now. And we have a plan, like he said, for September, October, to keep an eye on that.
I do want to publicly thank and commend Ms. Turnbow and all of our ELL teachers for the tremendous work that they've done over the last couple of years. That we couldn't be where we're at today, and we couldn't have exited all these children if it weren't for the excellent staff we have. I'm sorry, Ms. Sharp, I hope I didn't cut you off.
No worries. So if the money comes in, we would just back it out.
Correct.
We just back it out.
Yes.
And put them back in the same place.
Correct, back into Title II and III. My only concern with how well we're doing with our district exiting numbers is it used to be part of the state accountability model, and now it's not.
Of course.
So we used to get, this used to be 10% of our overall score, and now it's zero. That's unfortunate.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay.
You already heard about rocket shipping notice. Next is curriculum instruction. First, we have CTE department would like to allocate approximately 9,000 of the Innovative Schools Model grant funds, 2526, to support the OSHA trainers for the high school CTE students. The purpose of this in-house OSHA trainers is to eliminate barriers for students obtaining OSHA TDOE-approved industry certifications. OSHA trainers will be responsible for completing the OSHA train, the trainer course set for July 2025. You'll see the eight-day professional development session below.
Any questions? Okay.
Next, we have Governor's Early Literacy Foundation. This is book delivery and caregiver engagement programs. Governor's Early Literacy Foundation is a Tennessee nonprofit that promotes early reading through programs like the K-3 Home Library, which provides free books to students and teachers. Rutherford County Schools participates in this program with an option for parents to opt out. To support a limitation, this agreement allows RCS to share students' names, grade levels, home addresses, media specialist names, and appropriate teacher names with GELF. Is this the second year or third? Second, third? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, next.
Next, we have Carl D. Perkins Basic Grant. This is not one that is frozen. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2018 notes the Perkins Five is presented for approval for the funding period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. This grant is $754,876.90. Carl D. Perkins Basic Grant provides funding for program improvement, equipment, travel, and staff development for our CTE teachers.
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Darby.
Dr. Sullivan, how do you guys decide where that money goes with all of our different CTE programs?
I don't want to give an incorrect answer. I think the, the simple answer is we continuously prioritize what programs need the right equipment to reach that industry certification level. So as you'll see, like with welding, for instance, that's been a huge focus for us based on industry, so that gets top billing. So we look at the industry certifications line, the teacher, the student enrollment, all of those things, and try to allocate based on where the gap is in our GP.
So you guys evaluate that every year, I guess, depending on which program is.
Correct.
Is this amount close to what we get?
Yeah.
Every year?
Yes. It normally goes up. This year, it's funded on the same exact level as last year.
Okay.
So it, it may come back and have additional funds. We also look, Ms. Darby, TISA this year for the first time is going to fund, they've tiered the CTE programs differently, so you get more funding for higher tiers, and so we're going to put more funding towards the higher tiers.
Any other questions? Okay, next.
The next one is a competitive grant that you apply for additional Perkins funding, and every year that I know of, we, we get this. The Carl D. Perkins Reserve Grant, Carl D. Perkins Reserve Grant is presented for approval for the funding period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. This competitive grant is for $50,000, and this grant provides funding for the welding booth trainer simulators for the agricultural mechanic CTE program study at Riverdale.
Any questions or comments? Yes, I don't, I can't imagine what that is, but I can't wait to see it either. Okay, next, special education.
We have a request for updated job description for speech-language pathologist positions to provide more clarity to the job description. Opposed description does not contain a change in pay scale or days in contract.
Okay, next.
Same, similar thing. This one is an updated job description for general education student services specialists to provide more clarity. The job description, again, does not contain a change in pay scale or days in contract.
Okay, next, we have human resources.
This is Rutherford County Schools Athletics and Coordinated School Health are partnering with Perry Weather to monitor weather conditions in the district and make sure we stay compliant with state safety guidelines. Perry Weather's onsite stations provide precise lightning, precipitation, wind, and air quality data, depending every five minutes in the mobile app and the dashboard. And we use something very similar this year when we were a host partner with TWSAA for spring fling. And it was very successful in us being able to look and see. City of Murfreesboro Parks and Recs helped us use their program they use.
I was going to ask if we've used this in the past, or is this brand new?
Williamson does, or one similar, and some other ones do. And then, again, Murfreesboro City let us use their program for TWSAA. It was very helpful.
Excellent.
Kind of takes it, and I hate to say it, takes it out of the coach's hand of, did we have lightning in the officials, or did we not have lightning? We can determine whether or not there was lightning within that radius.
Gotcha. Next, we have legal.
So approved fees per policy 6.709, prior to beginning of each school year, the board upon the recommendation of the principals and directors of schools shall approve all student fees for the upcoming school year. Additional fees may be approved during the year as needed.
Any questions? Okay, next.
Records clerk job description, this was part of the approved budget, but this is the actual job description. It has not been posted yet until this is done. Legal department's requesting the approval of a new job description for the 2526 school year. The new position will assist the legal department with managing, fulfilling student, staff, and administrative records requests.
Okay, next.
Campus school agreement. MTSU has renewed the agreement between RCS and MTSU regarding campus school, and this agreement will be effective for five years.
Excellent. Next, we have policy adoption.
So we have two policies, I believe, and I'm getting into my updated one, I have notes on there. So the request is going to be for these two, for the board to first, on Thursday, waive the requirement of two readings and then pass these. The first one is policy 3.400, student transportation management revises language for awarding or renewing contracts and updates language consistent with current contract. And I believe we'll have some discussion on that one. And then the second one is use of wireless communication devices, adds language for the use of personal communication devices for students pursuant to a change in state law. And just for anyone watching, our, what came out of policy, our recommendation last night was.
We're having, you, you speak very well.
Yep.
But your voice doesn't carry as well.
Not carrying tonight, it's, it's very raspy for some reason.
Can you put the mic closer to you where you can lean in?
I will. So the second one is for the use of cell phones. And what came out of policy last night was students not to have access to their cell phones during the school day up until dismissal. And they can still have them on them, but they have to be put away. That was our cell phones.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes, Ms. Rosales.
Okay. Yesterday, when we were talking about the transportation management, and there was discussion around the financials of, I don't have the policy with me, I was opening it up before I took the floor, but the financials and there's, there was a lot of discussions about what should be provided. After I went home and thought about it a little bit more, I do agree that we should show something that proves that there is funding for the, the security of the buses or the transportation of the business, whatever. And I don't know where, where we landed, if we voted, if we were going to come back and work on that specific piece, or we were going to make, approve the policy. I know we were going to do something today, but I was going to ask if we could make the change in that, that number four with the, about the finances. If it could be required to provide something that says there's proof of funds that's notarized. It's not a bank statement, it's not anything like that, but just a document that states probably from the institution that they're getting the funding for, or the banking financial institution, or even for the bus transportation.
We did do that yesterday.
We, I thought, yeah.
We did. We, on number four, we changed it to say that they had to provide adequate proof according to the Transportation Department that they had secured either funds or had the Title II or whatever of a bus. It's up to the Transportation Department if what they provide is adequate. The Transportation Department has to approve it, so we did take care of that yesterday.
So what is, what are we going to approve, what will be the, what is transportation going to prove as adequate?
Putting back on you.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Lee.
My thought would be a letter, basically a letter of credit from the bank that they've secured funding to purchase a bus. A letter from one of our two local bus manufacturers that they've agreed to provide them a loan. You know, or they're going to be the one who's going to finance the bus. We're not looking for their bank information, but we're looking for something from those individuals that says, yes, we are guaranteeing that if they're given a route, that we'll provide, that they have the funding to buy the bus.
Okay. I think I, will it be possible to have that notarized? Because when we're, that will make it more legal, that is, it's a document that is, when you notarize it, it makes it a little bit more stronger.
I, I don't think it, I mean, it's not.
It makes it legal and binding.
No, it's not.
Well, the only thing the notary would do is guarantee the signature. That, that, that's basically what the notary does, and most banks and financial institutions have them.
Yeah, I, yes, that's correct. So that's why I'm asking for it being notarized. If we can, it can be a notarized document.
Ms. Sharp.
Notarizing it is not going to do anything, but there is another document that they, from what I understood from yesterday, the AIA, something that you guys.
Yeah, but that's for contract, that's for construction contracts. I was using that as an example that we do, you know, require. I was letting everybody know that we're not picking on bus contractors asking for this because we do ask for a lot of bank information from all of our contractors who bid our work. So, and I guess I was trying to make the point that we do this as a practice, we're not singling out the bus contractor.
Right, so you're not asking for any other?
No, it could be a letter, I think Mr. Vaught's got a.
Yep, Mr. Vaught.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And I was going to holler, kind of thought about this, since so much of my business is related to financing. But this would be much like, you know, a pre-approval letter for a house. You know, you need to know what you can afford. And, and I think what transportation, or at least what I'm looking for for transportation, is that they would have some type of guarantee that either A, they could pay for the bus outright, B, they could get it financed through one of the bus dealerships, you know, on-the-spot financing, or one of our local lenders, and in fact, to open it up a little bit more, I've talked to Farm Credit just a little bit. There's some of our bus contractors that would qualify through Farm Credit to purchase it as a capital piece of equipment. So I think there's two or three things that, and I think transportation's probably got an idea of what that document looks like. I hate to tie it down too close, but I think some type of pre-approval letter or some, you know, a lot of credit, somebody's got, you've got, if you're going to buy a $200,000 bus, you've got something going on, right? And so, and we don't need to award contracts or tie up a bus route, you know, on a hope and a prayer and a promise. So I think give transportation a little bit of latitude, probably, and we'll, if we need to tweak it next year, we can tweak it. Does that sound all right? Yeah, and all I'm looking for, i- if I get it from Farm Credit or whoever it is, it's going to have somebody's name on it that signed it and a phone number. Loan officer. And I'm going to pick up the phone, or Wanda is, or. Verify. And we're going to pick up the phone and call that person and go, okay, yes, it says Farm Bureau when I answered, when they answered the phone. And we're going to verify that that letter's correct. So, so the notary, as long as we get the letter and it's signed and got somebody's name that I can call, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, okay. But it does, but we do require other contracts to provide their financial statements for their business so that it's a legitimate, reputable type of business, correct?
We do for our construction projects, yes.
Yeah, so that wasn't anything different, asking for a financial statement.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Do we, do we need any type of assurance on insurance since they're having to pay for it now? We could take that letter to approve them as a contractor, and then we could put a clause that, you know, 30 days after they've been given. Strongly suggests they better be working on their insurance. Yes, I mean, we, we do that now.
Okay.
But I, I think there, again, if you're that far down the hole, the rabbit hole, and you're serious about this, you're going to have to talk to somebody about the insurance first to know what it's going to cost. Well, and, and also too, it's not like it's a big surprise because you're on the list. Correct. Right, the list, the list is the list, so they, they know where their name is on the list, so they, three months out, six months out, they're going to start preparing, or they should be.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next, we go on to engineering and construction.
So several school requests. First is Oakland Middle School pad request. Principal Brad Deckers requests to install a few concrete pads at no cost to the school board. The cost will be covered through the soccer account along with donation for Smyrna Ready Mix. Smyrna Ready Mix is donating six yards of concrete for this project. The anticipated budget is $2,600. Engineering and construction has reviewed the request and has no objections.
Any other questions? Okay, next.
Daniel McKee Cafeteria mural request. Principal Nicole Sturbe is requesting to allow the Experian Church to pan a mural in the cafeteria area. This project is anticipated to cost $2,075 and is being donated by the Experian Church. This project is at no cost to the board. Engineering and construction has reviewed the request and with a noted possibility in the request of standing water, has no objection.
Do we know what the mural's going to look like?
Do not, unless it's in this tab. Is it in the tab? The tab, though, okay.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Poplar Hill Elementary and CUD cost reimbursement agreement as part of the overall Poplar Hill Elementary and Middle School project. RCS is required to relocate an eight-inch water line owned by CUD. While we're doing the work, CUD would like to upgrade the water line from eight to 12. By making a request, CUD will reimburse Rutherford County Schools.
By making a request, CUD will reimburse Rutherford County Schools for the difference in the cost of materials. The cost reimbursement is $50,395. Engineering has reviewed the request and has no objection.
Any questions? Okay, next.
Energy-efficient lighting program. RCS has recently been provided with a requested cost report for the LED lighting project from Excel Energy. After review of all schools, Excel has provided a cost analysis for review. The expected total cost today is $8,400,000. Anticipated TVA incentives are $768,000 to make up a net cost of 7.6 million. This is an annual energy savings of a little over a million dollars, and our payback would be roughly six years. This project is being funded this year and Fund 177 at $4 million, and with any additional review being added later in the school year.
How far are we along getting off the field?
Done.
We will be complete. I got one more, one more field, not one more campus, but all schools will be complete in the next few weeks.
Excellent.
That's awesome. Better lighting is cheaper.
Excellent.
It's, we will finally meet T double S double A lighting regulations for the first time on all Rutherford County fields.
And then as part of that, we've already, I know our new schools, of course, have LED, but we have, Smyrna Elementary School is being updated along with their HVAC, correct?
Correct. And our new schools, we started at John Coleman. It's LED, Rocky Fork Elementary's LED, Plainview's LED, Smyrna High's LED. So, so we, we've been converting schools. We started sometime back with our new construction and our renovation projects. They've all been LED. And I would, I guess I've kind of got the floor for a minute. In your tab six at the back, there, there's a little bit more to this, and I didn't want to have like six paragraphs in this thing. There, there is a fairly comprehensive, Excel Lighting has been to every campus and counted every light. They spent three or four weeks walking our campuses so that we could get. Page two, currently what we're anticipating, not only are we looking at 768,000 incentives back from TVA, which we only got half of our sports lighting, we got a little over half a million back from TVA, or we're going to get a half a million back from TVA for half of our fields because they had stopped this program, but they started it back in January, and they wouldn't go backwards and let us pick up the schools we'd already done. So, we only got a half, which I'm not minimizing a half million. I'm tickled to death that we got a half million back. But we're looking at getting 760,000. That's a fairly close number. Once completed, we will begin to see an actual annual electrical savings of a little over a million dollars a year.
That's awesome.
What, what, what this initial program is, and we need to begin to move forward. Of course, we're not going to have the funding probably till the first of the year because it's all predicated on property tax. So, we don't get the money for our 177 fund to be able to start this project, but I have some legwork that I would like to continue, go on to do. The main things I want you to get from this takeaway, and I would like for you to look at, it's only three or four pages, when you have a moment, is there, there's basically two options. One option, I'm going to use round numbers. Don't hold me to the number. The actual numbers are here.
You go to page 108.
You've got eight million for basically a bulb-type replacement, meaning we keep the housing, we go through, we change all the bulbs, and we change the lenses, we change all of our parking lot lights, we change our building, exterior building lights, and we change all of our exit lights.
Is this where you need us to be, this document, or somewhere else on here?
Sir?
Do you need us to be right here, or do you need us to be somewhere else?
Scroll down to the bottom, John. That number is roughly eight million, correct?
Eight million, 400,000?
Yeah. All right. So, that, this is option A. Eight million dollars, and it shows the TVA incentives, and it's by school. It'll show you what our initial cost is per school. TVA incentives, net cost, kilowatt savings, total energy savings, and then you get over to the far right, that's our payback. We can get a, I'm going to call this the less expensive option, six-year payback. In the next option, scroll down, John, there again, same information, same schools by school. If you scroll down to the bottom, we get to a number that's 14 million with a 12-year payback. This is basically, we take out every light fixture completely and put new light fixtures back. We do have some areas where our fixtures are very old. It would be a nice upgrade to change out the whole fixture. Be more of aesthetics versus function and safety. But if we can get some aesthetics, as Ms. Sharp has said before, ceilings, paints, floors, any improvement is, is, puts in the student's mind, somebody cares. I'm not necessarily saying I want to go to the 14 million. Would be really nice, but it would take us a while and a lot of money. Somewhere between the 14 and an eight is a sweet spot, where we can replace some for aesthetics, some for just function. And hit somewhere in the middle, our savings, utility-wise, is going to stay the same. And we'll be somewhere between that six and 12-year payback. If we could get in that sweet spot, and our number would be between eight and 14. This year, we're going to spend four million. It's, it's a three-year project, no matter how we do.
You're thinking, oh, my miles an hour right now. Generally, in the housing industry, there, you paint a house every seven to 10 years. You do a facelift, as I call it, every 12 to 15. You do a major overhaul at 20. The major overhauls, new cabinets, gut the bathrooms, back the side of that is that replacing of light fixtures. And so, Terry and I have always looked at, at that, that 12 or 15 years is kind of, you know, they're out of date. Let, let's just say, they're out of date. They're like me, a little over the hill, maybe. It, it, do you have a vision, and not trying to pin you down tonight, but is there a vision? Do, do we say that, you know, any school that's over 12 years old, over 15 years old, we put the new light fixtures in? Or, and I don't want to make the rule hard and fast, but, but that would be kind of where I would be leaning toward.
That would be a large part of it, but if you think, here's where I'm going to throw you a curve ball. Segal House, 20 years old.
Right, right.
We don't have very many schools. The vast majority of our schools are going to be in that old, and they've got the original lights. They're going to be 25, 30, 40 years old.
Yeah. Because Oakland River, Oakland Riverdale are getting in this revamp right now, right?
Yes. The, the-
And this has been changed.
Yes.
These have been changed.
Yes. So, somewhere is a sweet spot, and that's what I'm asking for a little bit of flexibility on me. We're going to spend four million this year.
We'll see how far it goes.
And see how far it goes with this flexibility of, of a little bit.
Yeah.
And, and you're, you've hit the nail on the head. I'm not going to get any more money back for my electrical uses.
Right.
My, my savings is pretty much the same either way we go. We're going to get the same, pretty much back from TVA, however we go. But I do think there is some value in some places to replace the whole fixture.
Yes, yes. And, and there will be value, as, as you were referring to, Ms. Sharp saying, you know, everybody feels better. School feels better, principal feels better, teachers feel better, students feel better. Everybody's better.
I would like, I guess what I'm looking-
And you can't put a value on that.
No, you can't. And, and what, I'm being forthright to let you know what I would like to do.
Sure.
That's why I left the questions and/or motion from the board. I guess what I'm looking for is a little bit of flexibility, keep you informed of where we're kind of going, what schools, what we're, where we're going to land, come back later in the year with some additional revised numbers to give, so that you're not sitting here going, is he going to end up at 13.5, or is he going to end up at nine? I'd like to give you a little better number, but I would like to get working with the firm that we've got, and you've got all the information based on, basically, that's where we start, is those two numbers.
Yeah, I, I think that's what you do, and, and, you know, go back to the bull and nickel too, you know, that some of this, I don't know, maybe it's handled there. You don't know what emergency projects you're going to have. We don't know how thin a margin we've got. Well, we operate on a pretty thin margin right now, but there may be some things that happen this year that don't get, that don't get taken care of, that you could move that money out of. So, I'm, I mean, I'm good with it. I think that's the most appropriate way to approach this.
But I've given you the information on the two. Basically, somewhere between option A and option B is where we would like to be. I would like to come back a little bit later with another number. I'm not real good at having people to do a whole lot of work, knowing that they're possibly not going to get paid at all. I would like to commit with Excel Lighting to go forward, and then we come back with a number later.
I've had several parents call me about lights at Central. And I understand that's a, a different animal. But there are short pole blue lights that would, that you could put in the parking lot. A lot of colleges have them, because that's something that we could, that could help-
You talking about in the parking lot?
Yeah.
City of Murfreesboro has said no. That is a historic district. We have gone down this.
We've gone down this.
Do you know anybody?
I know a few people.
The, the city has basically told us we're over what we should be foot candles for that area of town already, and don't ask for any more lights.
But it is extremely dark and unsafe.
It's extremely dark and it is unsafe. And thank you for telling me that. I will do my best to work on that.
Everybody should have the option to go and sit with a historical commissioner. That's a real experience. When I was at Central, I got the opportunity to do that on soccer fence, and it was quite an experience.
I'm sure.
So, I don't wish that on anybody, but anyway. See, I mean, you, you have approached the historical committee. We have, I mean, it is, because what I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, after they tore the hospital down, there's a lot of candle watt power that got gone then, you know? Can't we just get a little credit for that, move it over to Central or something? But-
Unfortunately, that, that-
My logic is not at our property level. Yeah, yeah. My country logic doesn't work there. But back to, it says questions or proposal, motion from the board. What direction are we leaning, do we need? Do we spend up to four million this year? Or, or do we work for, you know, to-
That's all we have budgeted in Fund 177.
Anyway, so, so go ahead, go ahead, and I, I didn't know if you want some kind of commitment to, you know, for the next two, two or three years, you know? Just next-
Well, we all understand, it's the same thing that we've done with our sports lighting. It took two years.
Right.
And we've got a lot of HVAC projects that we get commitments from the contractors, and we have to fund it over a couple of years. The only thing there, they did this, this work through the TVA and, and the work that they do for free. They, they don't have anything in it right now, and if we walk away, they get nothing.
So, the, the motion needs to be appropriated up to four million this year.
Yes, and we, we have that in Fund 177.
So, we, we have the money, we just need to authorize it. That's what you're looking for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, I, I mean, I'm in agreement with, I think it's very prudent to do that. The payback is there, and just try to prioritize, you know, where it goes this year. Yeah, to pay for itself, it's a, it's a good program. I managed to one thing that we ran into when I was at Oakland, that because of the airport, the bright lights, you know, they can't be at a certain height, and you have to, you have, what is, the brightness can't be up to a certain amount, and if y'all run into that, I mean, it's something y'all have to deal with.
At Oakland? We don't anyway. Now, now, there's, there's different foot candles for different radiuses, like at John Coleman, because of its, it is in a flight path for the Smyrna Airport. There were some restrictions there, but typically, it, to the average person, it's, they can't tell the difference.
We deal with crane heights, everything over there, don't we?
Yeah, I kind of got, had a crane operator that got kind of loose at John Coleman, and we got her hand slapped. But that was on them, that was on the company. They should have done that. We had that in Oakland as well. We got, we got contractor with his crane a little bit too high, and it was okay, he just didn't have the right paperwork submitted to the airport.
Sometimes it's easier to forgive than it is for me.
Ms. Sharp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. If my memory serves me correctly, we've been trying to get this done since 2022, and we've probably left some money on the table.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, we need to get this done, y'all.
Ms. Maxwell? Yes, Ms. Rosales.
Thank you. So, this eight million dollars is to cover the whole entire school. Even if we go up 50, whatever sweet spot we decide between the eight and the 14, it will still cover the whole, all of our schools, but the higher number will give you more money to replace some of the lighting fixtures that are needing.
True.
Awesome. Yeah, I, in '22, Ms. Sharp and I, we went to that energy efficient conference where we learned about different ways to cut costs by being energy efficient. And so, I, I think that was very motivating to get some of us on board to say, hey, let's find ways to cut costs and, and look in, in doing this program. So, I'm glad that we finally are able to do that, because we've been pushing that. I know I have been pushing that for a while. So, this is good. We're finally getting there.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lee. Next, financial matters.
Couple of job description updates from financial. First is an updated job description for the ISA accountant. What does ISA stand for, Brian? I know it's, is it individual school accounts?
Internal school accounts.
Internal. Wrong eye, darn. Second is an updated job description for payroll accounting specialist, and then third is updated job description for payroll accounting specialist two.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Sharp.
I think Mr. Vaught had brought this up, I don't know if it was our last meeting, it's been a minute. If we could get more information on the job descriptions, and even if it's not in here, similar to how Ms. Ridley does our policy, where she's highlighting the portion that's changing.
Yeah, we can do that.
Something like that, so that it's very clear to us what is changing within the job description, that would be really helpful.
We can do that.
Well, we have it in our package, just not highlighted what was changed. So, it's, like, if you go online, they have it on the tabs. It's just, it's, it's already there. He's just making the highlights of what it is. I mean, it's here.
I know, but Mr. Vaught had asked for it to be put on the agenda.
On the agenda, just, okay. Well, I'm very excited for 14, because I want to know what sponsorship approval, because that's my kind of a-
So, sponsorship proposal between Duncan, Donuts, and Smyrna High School. So, this is a $2,000 investment over six years for a total of $12,000 to become an official sponsor of Smyrna High Athletics, so that Smyrna runs on Duncan, is what it officially says.
I love it. I love it.
Yep.
Okay. Next, 15.
Next was the last board meeting, we had a discussion about offering a stipend for hard-to-fail structured setting EA positions, and I'm going to let everybody know our current open positions right now. We gave the board an update on email on Thursday. Let me get my list again.
Dr. Sullivan, we have currently 12 structured setting EA openings at this time.
Great, thank you. And then I'll give you guys the rest of everybody else in just a second.
Our approximation would be about 70.
So, overall openings, last week in classified, on July 16th, we had 88, and today we have 81, so definitely trending in the right direction. Certified last week, we had 49, and today we have 39. And so, when I sent you all that, that was on 716, and this was today, so 722. So, trending in the right direction, a little bit further for classified, sped EA, we have 24, 12 are the structured setting, but we have 12 other sped EAs. For comparison, we have 18 general ed EAs open. And so, 24 sped, 18 general ed. School Nutritions are biggest, 128 there, and 11 in custodial. For certified, we have 15 in middle school, 14 in elementary school, 10 in high school, 14 in elementary school, 10 in high school, and then six at the central office. 18. 24 sped, 18 general ed.
So we have most of our sped positions filled.
They're moving that way, yeah, which is not that atypical, because we, principals again, just started back about a week and a half ago, and so they're not doing a lot of hiring. They shouldn't really be doing hiring when they're not working, but some of them are working. Most of them are working anyways, but the big hiring season's right now.
Good. So we don't foresee, you don't foresee having an issue with vacancies through the year?
Well, for sure, we'll always have vacancies.
Sure, of course. It's a hard decision.
Always. It's a hard to fill position.
But it's not gonna be, it's not going to create issues with, 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 with however many we have open, it's not gonna have a significant impact.
It's not above anywhere else that would alarm me compared to the general ed one. Might alarm me more than the special ed one does right now. I wouldn't have expected that 18 general ed ones.
Okay, great. If anybody wants to be an EA, you have to be 18. You can have some college, and that will, you will not have to take. But if you don't have any college, you have to take the paraprofessional test. And it's, you know, and it's very enjoyable. I loved it, and I encourage anyone that's wanting a job and wants to get in there and loves kids to apply. It's really a great, very worthwhile.
Ms. Maxwell?
So Dr. Sullivan, so you don't foresee us having, as a board, having to come and do something as an incentive to try to incentivize this position?
Not right now.
So we're not gonna see, put ourselves in any type of lawsuits or anything like that because of how many positions we have open today?
Based on what we have right now.
Okay, great. Okay. Next.
Nothing but financial report. We, federal's our big thing we're looking at right now.
Okay. Director's update?
Director's update. I'll do most of it Thursday, but we started our summer conference with our teachers today, so our instruction department's done an amazing amount of work over at Blackman Middle and Blackman High. And so we're there today, and then we're there again tomorrow with our teachers. So we, we think 400 or so probably today, at least 400 teachers that are volunteering their time to be over there for training. And then Thursday, Friday are our two-day principal meetings, and I know they're thrilled to spend two days with us. So, yeah, Thursday all day and Friday half a day, and we appreciate Motlow giving us their space, so they're letting us go over there so we can get into a different environment.
Any other? I do want to say Camp Wonder was held July 7th through the 11th at Smyrna High School. I want to thank Smyrna High School, and it was a wonderful camp. 12 kids came together and had a wonderful week. And we'll be back next year, probably that same week, July 7th through 11th, and stay tuned. To be determined where we will be located, but it was just a wonderful week, and I just wanted to let you all know that. I appreciate all the prayers and support. Anything else? Well, if that's everything.
Move to adjourn.
You're adjourned.